The first thing on the agenda is to have a discussion with Senator Collins's representative. Hi.
How are you? Your protocols are.
You can, you can. Some people said it's.
Um, so just for everybody's information, in case you haven't had the opportunity, or I haven't actually had the opportunity. My name's Allison Cabaretta and state office representative out of the Augusta office for Senator Susan Collins. I cover Kennebec, Knox, Lincoln, and Somerset Counties. And a big area that I often interact with towns and municipalities and entities is around congressional directed spending. And that is why I'm here this evening is the Water Association here is currently has a pending fiscal year 2025. In CBS that has been voted out of full committee as of August. And plays on into that process and Senator Collins has advanced that on behalf of the town here. And thank you so very much. I'm happy to be here on her behalf. And that's applicants. So I do want to set some preliminary candidates to get into detail about the application, the project itself. Um, I can shed just a little bit of light on where the process, how the process can work. But for the most part, I just want to let you know that this is very consecutive process. Um, to be this far, do you even be submitted to begin with? And then to get through around to subcommittee, county level and the town and the water association and that patient was. And of course, a lot of work. So thank you for working so hard on behalf of your community, for everybody engaged in the process.
Can you give us an idea of where we stand in the process, what the next steps are? In terms of understanding, I understand that this is a substantial amount of funding and for that we are grateful for at least making it this far.
And so there's a full committee, which is the full Senate appropriations committee process goes through subcommittee and then through full committee. And it voted out of committee, which means it now sits before the Senate to be taken up for some form of advancement as the whole Senate body. There are many different vehicles for that to occur, which way that will happen is to them. Uh, and we shall see where it goes. But the good news is, is you have to then vote it out of committee to be this far, of which the project was part of that. And you can see the project listed underneath Senator's website. Um, services on the main menu down to appropriations and the public disclosures are there. See what the amount underneath what's known as the interior bill for this particular project. Um, and that is what still stands in its current form as submitted to go forward up for that vote. On the House side, a similar process is occurring. And then once both chambers have done their thing, it will then go into what's known as conference. And then over to the president for signature, a very simplified version of what is to occur, but that's kind of the bird's eye view there. So again, it takes a lot of work as a town as mentioning to put together a good proposal to get this far. And that's really your hard work here as a community. And that's why congressional directed spending makes a really big difference. And why Senator Collins played so hard for it. It turns around and makes a big difference in the community and everybody's quality of life in Maine. And that's really important to her. Thank you so much for the hard work you did to submit such a good application for us.
This has been a crucial part of bringing clean and safe water to the residents of North Monmouth. And without this funding, I, we were questioning how we were going to proceed with that project, having only uh, about two million, maybe 2.5 million of that project funded. So this actually closes that substantial gap. We've got a couple more uh, potential funders for the last, the last little bit that might be required in order for us to start breaking ground. Um, but we are very appreciative that the Senator has, for the second time, actually, she did. She did something about a year ago, just to help us with some engineering and feasibility pieces. So um, we're appreciative that she has forwarded this as far as, as she has.
I hope to continue to bring good news and I'm certainly keeping the Water Association updated as soon as we get information. Um, at every step of the way, and it's a pleasure to do so. And just thank you. And I'm certainly going to share this on behalf of the town with the Senator. And she just wanted to say thank you to all of you now that I'm here this evening. Just appreciative of the difference making projects.
Thank you. Thanks to Senator Collins.
The next lady is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
Well, thank you very much.
Steve. Yes, I thought the minutes were good as well. So I make a motion to approve the minutes of July 24th, 2024.
I do have a comment. Even though I wasn't at the meeting, votes were five zero. Surprise. It's amazing.
Oh, well, I didn't even notice that. Yeah.
Someone said stuffing the ballots.
You were voting telepathically. It was telepathic.
We need a recount.
Yeah, we do.
Recount, yes.
It was amended. Look at that.
Exactly.
So with the, with, without Joe here.
As amended, yes. Yep.
I'll second that.
So this is a made a motion and had a second to approve the minutes as amended. Without Joe being at the meeting, anyway, all those are favored.
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't here. I did try to listen, but the quality of the sound was not very good.
You were far away.
No, I was, I went right there. Yeah. No, I was in New York.
Oh, you were in New York. Okay, so on to department reports.
Do we want to skip to number eight?
We, you know, I.
I think, I mean, we're moving along pretty good.
They'll be all right.
I have anything to move along.
I guess I'm the only department to report.
Yeah, Chief, I won't be here tonight.
All right, um. Month of July, we had 345 calls for service. Ended up with six arrests for criminal summonses last month. Criminal summons, ninety-one and a fifty-five out on 202. Another one for a hundred and one and a fifty-five, you know, on 202. One arrest for disorderly at the town beach. Ended up being arrested for OUI at the beach as well. And we had a separate arrest for an OUI involving a personal injury traffic accident on 135. One arrest on a warrant and then one arrest for domestic violence, terrorizing, and aggravated criminal mischief. Last night, we had community night out at the police station. Uh, we figured we had about a hundred and eighty people attend the event. Served a hundred and seventy hot dogs and a hundred and seventy-two hamburgers.
I only had one hamburger. Somebody had two.
Joe. Um, I just want to thank all those who attended and assisted in the event. I'd like to personally thank Tommy Newhall from Robert's. You know, donation of a hundred and fifty hot dogs and rolls as well as cooking for the event, which allowed me to walk around and talk to people. Um, effort for their donations of the hamburgs, rolls, cookies, and condiments, the Monmouth Fire Department, Public Works, Library, Lions Club, Monmouth Fishing Games, Great Falls Credit Union Cockrood and Trail Brett Flages, and my daughter Megan, who face painted all the children.
You're a lion.
Yeah, she did. She always does. That's the main draw for all the kids. Right after the fire truck. Um, and I especially want to thank Donna Shaw for organizing the event, pulling it all together. We couldn't have done it without our efforts. Um, I mean, I just signed a one-year contract with Anderson County Public Safety Answering Point to answer all our 911 calls. This um, covers us from July 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025. The cost for the service is nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents, which figures out to a cost of four dollars and seventy-five cents. Cost per citizen based on our population of four thousand sixty-six people.
Chief, can I interrupt for a second?
Yes, sir.
How did, how was that different than this year?
Um, they went up from four twenty-five to four seventy-five. Cost per citizen.
It was like a 12%.
Probably around there. And when you're the only answering point in town, we were fortunate to get it for that cost.
Does that compare with like other, do we have any other choices?
No.
Somerset County?
Somerset County just dropped all the communities in Kennebec County that they were servicing PSAP services for. Um, which forced Waterville to have to go to a, become a 911 PSAP center because no one else could take it on. Uh, and talking Waterville, Winslow, Oakland, you have to hold all the surrounding communities, then out the public safety, public safety answering point of northern Kennebec counties.
Yes.
There aren't many PSAPs around and there are fewer that want to do it. Somerset backed out just because they had a problem staffing and keeping up with the calls.
And when Waterville is forming their own, how much are they charging CPC?
I, I don't know the answer to that. But they would not be willing to take us on.
Right. So it's kind of a moot point anyway.
Just want to bring to your attention that um, at some point in the very near future, you'll be getting some information on road closures for Main Street. I put the map on the back to show you where the, the closures are going to occur. That's where Apple Pest, Dave Walker is filling out the form. As soon as he fills it out, we will get it. The town manager sort of hit on the agenda for the next meeting. I just wanted to bring that to your attention that will be coming up in the near future. Last item, flip over the page, the backside of the page. The last item, the, um, I want to organize a feasibility study committee to look into the possibility of consolidating the Monmouth, one of the winter police departments into one agency. The primary goal of this committee is to see if there's an interest going forward. Um, to research, looking to research the possibility of combining. Again, the committee would be made up of town managers from both communities, select board member, council member, lieutenants from both police agencies, myself, and two civilians, one from each of each community. Again, the purpose of this committee would be to see if there's interest from the communities to consolidate both police operations into police agency. One into one police agency. Concerns, thoughts, questions? Benefits would be, uh, one of the, one of the problems we are having is supervisory issues. Myself, Dana, Lieutenant Westling, and Lieutenant Hammond, and Winter are being on call constantly because we don't have uh, supervision. One of the things this would do is provide supervision for both days and nights that we lack now. Which we get calls all during the night. Guys asking for questions about something they're working on, call they're working on. So this is one of the benefits would be utilizing that, that resource, having supervisors available. Another, another would be, which we're doing right now is backing each other up. Uh, having more than one person on, you'd have a person, Monmouth has a person, and what's up with the supervisor on? So you always have three people on. Uh, so it's just, there are, there are benefits in that regard. There will be benefits in as far as not needing to utilize much overtime for each community because you got coverage, you need to do what you need to do without all backup. Call someone in. It's going to promote better operations within as far as scheduling people for vacation time. When you only got four people working the road, it's hard to, for them to schedule vacation time. Just by the nature of the beast, we're covering 24/7 and someone takes a day off and you have to order someone in to cover. I mean, there are, there are lots of hidden benefits to this. I think one of the, one of the concerns that I, you know, in doing research on this, one of the concerns I've seen nationwide is the fact that you have individual communities that don't want to give up control or they fear a lot, loss of control or fear that if you're going to find them in one agency, we're not going to get the coverage we used to get. Where in fact, in this situation, it would actually be the opposite. It's just a matter of getting the information out and answering questions that the public may have. Are there concerns surrounding this sort of consolidation? And that's what I look for, for the committee is directions and try to help and if they feel this is a worthwhile endeavor worth looking at and exploring. Um, and they want to go forward with consolidation effort that we do everything we can to educate the public and inform them of what the benefits and what the consequences and what the concerns are, you know? I think that's the big thing is just being uh, uh, very transparent in the, in the process. So that everybody, everybody's going to expect the worst, you know? Uh, is just try to relinquish those fears as much as we can right in the forefront. So that people understand the need and why we want to do this. One of the other things is when you have small department, like Winter's small, Monmouth's small, but uh, when you have investigations that are very lengthy, whether very specialized, whether it be drug investigation or sex abuse investigation. Uh, and other drug investigations that last up to a year or longer, and we just don't have the resources to really give it what it needs to be given to bring it to conclusion. And with consolidation, you have a detective over in Winter, but maybe we make another half detective position to assist in Monmouth with sex crime investigations. Uh, which is, like I said, very specialized investigative techniques. And to have someone with one, two, three years of experience working the parole, that, you know, that becomes a concern. So that's another benefit of that.
How many officers are there in each department?
Um, in Monmouth, including myself, four and a half. I count myself as a half position because I'm doing Winter two, and in Winter, it's nine and a half.
Currently, the pay is the pay pretty much same in both?
No, the, the pay in Monmouth is roughly a dollar fifty less an hour than what Winter's making.
Because our guys are part of that union, correct? No?
Well, Monmouth has a union, yes.
What about Winter?
Winter has a union and it's the same union. Yeah.
This happened at some point in the future. There'd have to be a reconciliation likely in those contracts. So it'd be the same. You can do that usually over a period of time. It doesn't have to hit you all at once. You just get everybody to agree that. It might take two years or whatever.
And the final thing I have, it's not on your list. I just, it was kind of final thought on my part. We're meeting on July 12th in this office for the uh, final meeting for the crisis, school crisis plan that we've been working on for the past eighteen months.
August, August 12th.
Yeah, yeah. I wrote July 12th, August 12th. Yeah, I don't want to go back.
Well, I would like more summer, but.
Uh, August 12th, we'll be needing to finalize the, the document. And then from that point on, we'll, we'll set up a tabletop exercise. And then from there, we'll go, uh, once the tabletop has been done and we uh, worked out the bugs on the tabletop, then we're going to actually go into the schools and do not a live rehearsal, but a rehearsal without students in the school. Um, and just do walkthroughs and scenario-based incidences. So that's where we're at right now. Um, August 7th, 2024.
Thank you for working on that. I know it's been a long slog.
It's been a long, it's been a long process, especially in the summer time to get everybody together when vacations are. But uh, everybody has contributed well and, and I mean, we had any luck between eight old people on the table. It was good partnership working with the schools and superintendent, law enforcement, county, and uh, everybody worked together well and recommendations galore. We made changes. I think we ended up with, that was final one, it was the 12th and 13th document that we ended up went through all the processes. So it all came together. It's looking good and now it's just a matter of testing the policy and making sure we get all the bugs worked out. Any questions?
Coming back to the, the proposal, you've got the feasibility study committee. What's the difference in population size between Monmouth and Winter?
About two thousand. Winter's running about sixty-six hundred. Monmouth, we're at four thousand sixty-seven. I went to Waterville, so my math isn't that good. So it'll be about twenty-five. I'll use my strong suit, okay? All set?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We are currently getting ready to finish our second session of swim awesomes on Friday. We ended up having forty-seven kids this session, so if you could sign up on the first day. Um, it's been going well, even though the last couple of days have been kind of cloudy and cold, all the kids have shown up. So we've been in the water. The water's still work. Um, we have guards continuing to get life there until August 20th. And then we're planning to take the docks and leave lines out on the 21st. Um, as some of them are getting ready to head back to school and whatnot. Um, we repainted the safety words on the walkout dock in one of the floating docks and we still have one more dock to do. Um, but with the busyness of the beach, it's been kind of hard to do because you need to drop paint to dry. And so we kind of had to play with that a little bit. Um, there is one or on a, on one of the floating docks that will need to be fixed when we take them out for the summer. The couple of screws came out on the piece that goes over the edging of it. Uh, so that will need to be fixed. It's not anything I can fix in while it's in the water. So. Um, but other than that, everything's been going pretty good, other than a flock of geese still at the beach. Know how to get rid of them?
I know that's the kind of a spawner.
Oh, awful. Oh, we chase them away every morning. We've been picking up geese poop as much as we can because it's just a noise. So if you got any clues on how to keep them away, let me know.
I got a neighbor who puts out pie pans of little stinks.
We've had geese there, so it's like, it's so, it's, it's interesting.
Usually they use weather balloon.
Weather balloons with like a little eye on it?
No, they scare the geese. They think there's a bird of prey over there.
Yeah.
Dump a bunch of corn down on Dave and Donna Shaw's farm.
That'll be a temporary solution.
Ducks kind of fight over territory and the ducks have always been there. So like.
Have we, have we always taken the docks out prior to Labor Day?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the.
It's, it's about the same time, within a day or two, depending on how the days, and sometimes it's a Wednesday, sometimes it's a Thursday.
Yeah.
Um, but with limited staff, I've already had one leave for college today. And so we're into preseason at that point. So it gets tricky to keep them out there and not have staff to bring them in.
I agree. You said forty-seven?
Yes.
Forty-seven kids?
Yep.
How's that compare with last year?
Uh, it's about comparable for last year. I don't have last year's numbers in front of me, but this session is about what beach session was last year.
Okay.
Um, and I think it really was just about timing and whatnot, you know? And in years past, like a flyer has gone home with all the kids at the elementary school and that didn't happen this year. So that communication was a lot different and delayed. Um, which is why there weren't that many that first session.
How many did we end up with the first session?
I believe it was twenty-five, twenty-two, something like that. It was in the twenties. But pretty low for a July. So like, that's typically what the June session would be when we do three sessions. So a little well there.
Thank you.
Uh, just a couple of quick things. You, you may have seen that the town farmer was paved. I would think Tony thinks they did a real good job. The crew's been out there fixing people's driveways to get it. So there's not a bump. Um, Tony and I have been continuing to work with FEMA. We think we're in pretty good shape working with them. Our delay is just getting a paving crew to finish the road down there in the time that we need it done. So that's our only issue. Public Works may have to do it themselves if they can't, take up a lot of their time if they have to do it. The auditors just sent the first set of questions this week, so they, so they can, we can hopefully be prepared for them in November when they show up. And the Beaver Brook project, we, we have received a extension on the stream crossing grant, but there's, it's not going to happen this year. It'll have to be 25. The um, the secondary vendor, a primary vendor we lost because we don't even have the money after town meeting. They're not, they're not willing to wait. And the secondary vendor can't do it in the timeframe and, and um, Army Corps won't, won't extend the timeframe for the construction. So we'll have to do it in the next construction season. Um, I made it abundantly clear to the campground when they called that if something happens to that in the middle of the next spring and Tony determines that it's unsafe, like that will be it. Like there won't be, there won't be a road. So just as long as that. I, I wanted to convey that because of their unwillingness to help contribute to this project. And that's, uh, I think that's all I have unless you guys have any questions for me today.
Has there been any sign of them opening up the back door entry through Wayne?
I've heard from some in town that say it's not practical, like it's in such bad shape that they'd have to spend a fortune to get through there.
Yeah, yeah. It would be a lot of work to haul big campers through there and.
Maybe it was you that told me. I don't, I don't know. Somebody told me that. It's rough.
Yeah.
Is number seven as weighty a discussion as it sounds like it's going to be?
No.
I wouldn't think so.
Uh, select board reports. But are you here for number eight?
Yes.
Yes. You want to, can we go to number eight and come back to select board reports?
Yeah, sure.
You want me up there or here? What?
You can sit there wherever you're comfortable.
Okay. Uh, well, I just want to talk about Fidium Internet. A lot of the surrounding communities are getting Fidium Internet and it's very fast and it's very cost effective. And I got a sheet here that shows their prices. I'm paying like eighty bucks a month for internet. For that, I could, I'm getting like eighty gigabytes download. At that price, I could get two gigabytes download and upload from Fidium. It's fiber optic. It's extremely fast. And I understood, and I, I don't know this for a fact, but I, I thought the government had given communities money to invest in high speed internet. And I don't know whether Monmouth has that money or they use it someplace else or what. But I would just like to see some pressure put on Fidium. Somebody negotiate with Fidium to bring their internet into Monmouth. I understand that next year they're going to go to Winthrop. And I talked to a technician, a Fidium technician. He said they're considering whether to do Monmouth with Winthrop. But I'd like to see some, somebody step forward from the Monmouth government and, and talk to Fidium and see what can be done here because this, these rates are incredible and the speed is fantastic.
So I, I can, I can touch on that. I contacted after this inquiry, I contacted the uh, Maine Connectivity Authority, which is the entity that got all the federal money. They, they received, I think it was well over a hundred million dollars. Those projects, so I have a list of, th- they know exactly which houses, roads, everything in all the towns in Maine right now that don't have connectivity. So th- this is her, this is just, I'll just read a paragraph here just so that you can hear what she had to say. Given where we are with the federal funding at this time, the next state initiative that will have a direct impact on homes and businesses in Monmouth would be through our B program. We are currently wrapping up final location selection of all unserved and no connection locations in Maine. Then we'll move into a sub-grante selection process in the fall, winter 2024. B programming as designed by the NTIA, which is the federal, the, the federal program that has all the money that they're giving us, will not be a traditional grant round, but rather a bid process for eligible entities. The hundred and eighty-five locations in Monmouth designated as no connection and unserved locations will be grouped in at least one project service area that can be selected in a competitive process by B eligible entities. We'd be a B eligible entity. It's any, it's any um, uh, community um, in, in the state basically, or state entities or quasi-state entities. There's a whole bunch of things that qualify. Once this process is completed and awards are approved by the NTIA, there will be an prioritization, prioritized solution for locations. Parallel to this process by the Maine Connectivity Authority, the private sector continues to expand and build competitively, which is to say that Fidium Spectrum and other providers in the area could privately invest in some or all of these locations to be able to get to market first and increase customer base. Seeing fiber trucks in or around your community is a good sign of activity. Um, and then she just says, please let me know if you, if you have any other questions. If you do go on, on the Connectivity Authority website, they have a map that's very detailed, even in Monmouth. Like you can see which peninsula is they consider to have no internet, some internet and where the good internet is. They, they know exactly where they are according to that. And they did a rulemaking process to make sure that people agreed with that or that the providers agreed with those areas. So you can see that if you're interested, you can see where the, where your house is on that, on that list. Uh, but basically the first rounds of this will be for individuals that they say that they, they have no connection. So their download, it's less than twenty-five megabytes download or three megabytes upload. That's a hundred and one locations in Monmouth or four point nine percent of the residents. Unserved, which is under a hundred megabytes download and twenty megabytes upload is eighty-four locations or four percent. So she's saying that those, you know, roughly eight point nine percent of the residents locations in Monmouth will be eligible for that first round. After that, it will be subsequent rounds to use the federal money to improve everybody else that's, has better internet than that. So that's kind of where they are with the money. I think that's probably what you were reading about on the, on the internet.
Consider cost at all.
I know.
Yeah, actually what they're targeting is people who are, don't have any service at all, period. Or, or residents that don't have any service at all, period. Or residents that have extremely. Say it again?
Like I know why they did Lewiston then. You can't tell me that people in Lewiston don't have internet.
So that's the, well, and that's the, the, the other category that was referenced there is like uh, if Fidium sees a profitable example of Lewiston where there's a huge density of people, then they're going to say, okay, we're going to put a pipeline in there because we've got a lot of people running on our backbone. So we, I mean, there's a reason why a hundred and one and eighty-four uh, Monmouth residences have either no or very or uh, reception or, or connectivity. And it's because they live off in the woolly wax and there's no, there's, there's no company that would send them a cable, let alone a fiber optic cable uh, because they're way out in the, you know, countryside. It's, it's interesting also to see, what was the, the eighty-four? You said twenty-five over three is a hundred and one. That gives this less than twenty-five over three.
Yeah, a hundred and one locations are four point nine percent.
Yeah. For the eighty-four, what is their definition of connectivity there?
Oh, for the eighty-four, less than a hundred download and more than twenty upload.
So a hundred over tw- twenty.
Yeah. Or greater than twenty-five download and three upload. So between those two.
Yeah.
Brands.
It's interesting because, I mean, we've got spectrum and even spectrum is like, you know, you test them, you do a speed test on spectrum.
Sixty.
It's, it's not a hundred. It's a hundred right now. And then they know you're doing a speed test and they bump it up. I mean, they're just unscrupulous, those people.
You have uh, internet right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's slow.
Eighty-five.
Yeah.
And I'm paying eighty bucks a month.
Right, right.
And Green.
If you don't consider cost, I mean, I think anybody can get satellite internet if they want to pay a fortune.
Sure.
Green just voted down their um, expansion or.
Oh, to use public money to do it?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's because, you know, the, the, in order to entice one of these companies to come in, you've got to subsidize. I mean, Litchfield voted for it, but now people are a little upset in Litchfield because they're, they're spending public money to subsidize, I don't even remember the vendor. But people aren't happy with the vendor and they're paying, you know, tax dollars um, to subsidize service. Um, it's also interesting.
Town of Wayne, Town of Wayne just voted in. They're spending like three quarters of a million.
Right, seven hundred thousand dollars. Yeah. It's also interesting that uh, the market seems to be solving some of the problem. I mean, I just uh, I get tired of spectrum and their shenanigans and signed up for uh, a five G connection that's almost as good as spectrum on a bad day, which seems to be pretty reliable. It's okay. You know, it's through US Cellular. It's a cellular connection. And.
I have one of those from a- a- at my house because I live near the interstate.
Yeah.
I use T-Mobile and mine's twice as fast as it used to be when I hit spectrum.
Yeah.
And it never goes out.
Yeah, yeah. So uh, so, so I hear you. Um, it's a moving target.
Is there anyone who could talk to Fidium about including Monmouth with Winthrop?
We can certainly, I mean, she gave me the person who could tell me what their plans were, but it didn't sound like, um, I'm certainly happy to reach out to this person and see what's going on. It's just, we don't have any leverage to, to to have them doing it than other than just asking.
Technician, but he said they were thinking about including Monmouth when they did Winthrop next year.
Sure, that'd be cool.
Yeah, I'm happy to ask.
And uh, if there are things that we can do to make that an easier reality for them.
We can, the guy who contacted me was, I remembered his name, Scott Farnham. I think he's from Monmouth.
That'd be nice.
You're Scott Farnham?
Yeah.
You're not thinking of John Farnham, not seeing him. You would email him.
So you would email me about Fidium. And I thought that you were a representative of the company.
No.
Now he's a Monmouth resident. Here's who wants.
If he was, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
That's my guess. So I can leave the rates here if you guys are interested.
Yes, please do. I'm always curious to know what that stuff is. Let's, let's move it. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for your attention. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Be welcome. Thank you. They're very competitive. If, if you can get them to plug it in, it's going to be super competitive to current, you know, market rates. But uh, the cost of uh, you know, pipe like that is, you know, six figures for a mile. So they're not going to go down some camp road to plug in someone who's at the very end with a nice view.
Read that article about Green and what the people were saying because they still have an open town meeting and the discussion points around that where, you know, these people that don't have to worry about that, don't worry about it, don't want to pay for the people that are worried about it, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, and even in Litchfield, I mean, you can, Justin, you can talk to your folks about their opinion of the Litchfield situation, but they, they spent a long time and put a lot of money into subsidizing somebody, some company to come service Litchfield and now I think they're probably suffering from buyer's remorse.
Yeah. And, and when you get your signal from US Cellular?
Yep.
It's from the tower?
Yep. Yep, and it's, it's not great. You can go to a Zoom meeting and you can, you know, do email and stream video and that sort of thing. But it's not, you know, I don't know that I want to play a video game. I don't play video games, but I wouldn't want to play a video game on it, which is, you know, which is the super intensive data stuff that people are doing. Right now, it's like, yeah. Requires these super high speeds.
It's like a hundred megabits a second or?
Uh, the service I've got is, I don't know if it goes up to a hundred. I don't know. What are you, what are you getting with?
Mine on a good day, I can get one forty and sometimes it goes down to eighty-five. So it, it, it never gets worse than my worst day on the spectrum. So I've, I've, I've been very happy with it. And it, and it has a, as they were trying to get people to hook up, it has a price lock for life. It doesn't, it doesn't change unless I disconnect it.
Right.
You know, you can't say that for all the founders.
So, and I think, I see the federal money as sort of plugging the gap for people who don't have service.
Correct. I believe that's the case. Yeah.
Right. They're not really interested in lowering the price of internet. They're gonna, they're gonna plug the gap for people who are, you know, stranded. And that's an important piece because, you know, it goes straight to, you know, real estate value basically. Like it's hard to sell a piece of real estate if it can't connect to the internet.
And if you look at that map, it's all in shades of red. And there's a lot of them that are deeper red than his shirt and that indicates that they have nothing.
Right.
So when you kind of spread that around the state, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I wear a gray coat.
Yeah, so that's not, that's not Monmouth. That's, you know.
There are places in Monmouth because i- if you take certain points and certain areas that are, you know, in the woods. I'm sure the bog is considered unconnected, you know, if there's a, but you know, I, I'm not sure how they.
But.
Draw on the map.
Yeah, the market might actually solve that problem on its own eventually. I mean, it's kind of the sign that I'm seeing. It's like.
I'm pretty sure our taxpayers are not going to want to subsidize.
It'd be a tough sell.
That was, yeah, Green's feelings.
Right here up on Academy Road, I get two hundred possibly. And that's why I.
Yeah, you're, you're signed up for spectrum?
Yeah.
Well, that's what they'll advertise. They'll say up to two hundred. You get up to two hundred.
So uh, on to uh, select board report. Yes, thank you.
Any. I have a couple of things. Uh, we had a, a meeting of the trails committee, meeting again on Friday. Uh, the trails committee is putting together with the uh, collaboration of Snowmobile slash ATV Club because they're going to need probably to use some of their trails. Uh, the trails committee is putting together uh, a proposal to um, uh, put in a trail system on RSU property starts basically where the sports field is. Follows the old cross-country trail area down behind the high school, down behind the middle school. And then kind of circles up and comes back to Academy Road. Um, that's the general uh, proposal. Um, the thought is uh, that we need to have some planning done in order to make that a reality, in order to uh, uh, actually make an application to the state funding for construction. So we uh, we might come to the select board as the trail committee to ask for uh, a small amount to be designated from the uh, economic development and TIF funding uh, to uh, just to do some basic planning and mapping and that sort of stuff. Um, not a huge amount. I, I had to ballpark it. It's probably somewhere between ten and twenty thousand dollars to have a professional come in and uh, uh, put together an application where we can actually go to the state and ask for a very substantial amount of, of construction funding. So uh, the thinking is that trail, and again, we've got to work with property owners. Um, but the thinking is that trail uh, would be for walkers, potentially cross-country skiers. My portion of it might have to be shared with uh, snowmobile traffic in the winter. Um, potentially horses. Um, and the RSU is looking at a collaborative effort there because they are looking for outside classroom space. And so yeah, branching off of that trail into back onto RSU uh, uh, property to uh, do some outdoor activities with kids in the woods. That's kind of their thinking. So RSU is sending their folks to our meeting on Friday. And uh, we're looking to kind of uh, uh, come to the select board at some point to ask for some seed money so that uh, we can take that and go to the state and actually get a substantial amount of funding for construction. Um, this is kind of, I, I, I suspect the, the committee would say that this is kind of the seed crystal for more trails later. Um, like on the other side of the, the ball field, there's an opportunity to run a trail to town hall. Uh, and to sort of building block it, but uh, this is kind of our first step. There was also a meeting of the economic development committee. We considered a facade grant uh, for uh, the school project. Uh, I'm sorry, the, the old Monmouth Academy project. Um, for uh, uh,
It's about twelve thousand five hundred.
Yeah, yeah, for uh, matching some of the funding that they've got um, for the Belfry renovations. Unfortunately, when we looked at the detail, the details of the uh, language of our TIF district, municipal buildings were not uh, considered applicable. So we, uh, of course, the select board makes the final decision on those facade grants. But uh, the economic development committee declined to make a recommendation for that. Because in our, in our opinion, it did not qualify.
Have you seen an application from the Monmouth Masonic Lodge for, you have not probably doing, moving on one side of the building? I didn't know if that was still in the district. The, it, it, does it go that far up Main Street?
So it doesn't have to be geographically located within the district that actually raises the funds for this. Because we've done uh, facade grants for say Jack Traps as an example. And a facade grant.
That property get added to the?
Nope, didn't have to be added. Uh, the facade grant uh, process applies to any, it's a business or nonprofit in town. Is the, is the requirement. And so uh, when we last did our language of what facade brands can be used for, we actually modified the language to include roofs that are visible from the street. So the Masonic Lodge would fall into that category and I would encourage them to apply.
They're, they're gonna.
Okay.
Tell David to include that stained glass window for that, to have that fixed.
But what I got?
Anything else? I, uh, I was asked about uh, the North Monmouth Boat Launch. The, the number of uh, those big concrete things that go down into the water.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess apparently it's a big, it drops off. Uh, I guess the, apparently it's a big, it drops off. Uh, when the lake is a little bit low or something and, uh, someone's putting their boat in it, you know, suddenly. Goes down or because there's no more. Those things. Are we responsible, the town responsible?
Sometimes they're, they're like the, um, they're like the, um, they fall under the boat program. So they, sometimes we can get them from the state, just, just like we can, like the, the new floats, the docks. When we, when we applied last time for our new floats, they didn't have any money for those. They didn't have anymore, or they were already spoken for, whatever, however you want to say it. Um, I can certainly inquire again. I'm happy to do that, if they couldn't help us last time. Doesn't mean they will have them next year.
Yes.
But they, uh, the, uh, Mary Dexter Wilson Watershed Group, uh. Said that it was, uh, that they thought it was. Made it difficult anyway, uh, to, uh.
Oh, yeah, if you back, it, it, I, I've been to some of those, like Gardiner at one point, if you back down too far. And you didn't have, yeah, and you didn't have something of enough to pull it back out, you could get your trailer stuck in there. Cause you know, if it fell down and landed on the frame and you had a smaller truck compared to the size of what you put in there, you could get yourself in trouble if you weren't paying attention. So, yeah. Nobody wants their stuff getting banged around back there.
Of course. A, a lot of that is just due from wear and tear, prop wash, right?
Right, people throttling up to get, get it on the trailer. Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll look into that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else first? Onto, uh, public comments.
Because that was your name.
Yes.
I have a point of information, or if you want to consider it that way, uh, the last couple of meetings that you people had. Two meetings ago, you were considering, uh, voting on or continuing to vote on the warrant items that did not pass. And last meeting, I believe you voted to have an election, an additional election to revoke on those item. Um, I'm wondering what, what authority does the board have to do that? I mean, the voters said, no, we don't want to, we don't want to spend money on these particular items. So I, I don't understand, and there's other people also don't understand how the board can say, well, we're going to. Ignore the, what the voters voted on and we're going to go through and vote again. And I mean, you know, I had somebody was talking to me and they go like, well, how many times are they going to vote on it? So I, uh, you know, that. No means no. So, and you people are elected to do what the voters want to do. And they said, no, they don't want to do that. So it, it seems. Not quite right that you can flip around and say, well, all right, you guys didn't really do what you want, what we wanted you to do, so we're going to vote on it again. So Eddie.
Uh, Select Board has the right to call special town meetings anytime they want, as many times as they want.
A town meeting or vote?
Both. We do our town meetings by, by vote, so ours take longer, um, because we need thirty days for absentee ballots. If, if we had an open town meeting, they could hold one seven days from the date they voted on it. So we could be doing it tonight based on their last, uh, the, the last week's meeting, but we can't because we have to. Uh, provide for absentee voting. Have you read the warrant articles that are, that are posted for this? There's only four. So the town voted down about ten or twelve items. And one of the four that they're putting on there is so that the town can make its debt service payments. The town voters voted down. So if we don't have the money, we're going to default on the, on the debt that we already have taken out, not, not new.
I, I fully understand that. But I, I went to read that and that's not really clear either.
What's not clear about it?
The, the four items that were listed there, they said four items and it starts with number two and goes to three, yeah.
That's because one is to call the moderator. The first article on any town warrant is to pick the moderator. So that's done by the clerk. When, when you have an election, it's not, if you had an open town meeting, the first article would be. Do they want to vote for the moderator? When you do it by vote, the town clerk just kind of points Rich as the moderator so that he can run the election. That's always a little confusing, especially when the ballots are put together because that question one doesn't appear and everybody always says, why does it start with two? And that's why, because the first one is technically done as an open town meeting. At seven fifty-nine, the clerk and anybody who's in the room could say they didn't want Rich, but usually there's nobody there. And then he opens the election, so the first question is two.
What other questions or concerns do you have about the additional articles?
I'm sorry?
What other questions or concerns do you have about the additional articles, two through five?
Five, yeah.
You know, except I, I was not cognizant that you could just call for an election on the, especially. You know, it, it, it looks like it's one-sided. If you don't fight, if you didn't, well, didn't approve them, we're not going to agree with you and we're going to throw it out there again. So how many, how many, how many times do you turn the hail, stay of hail over?
Well, it seems to me like there are some very essential items, uh, in each of those, in the pared-down articles. And they are different. They are pared down. We're not dealing with, how many did we start off with? Thirty, thirty-something. Uh, how many were rejected?
Twelve.
Twelve, and we're putting, uh, a pared-down list of four because they are, uh, essential. For, uh, the future of this town. If we default on our debt, then.
We're done for.
And we'll never borrow money again.
That's, that is correct.
Well, that doesn't seem wise. So unfortunately, uh, I mean, I don't often disagree with the will of the voters. Uh, but I think it would be wise for the long-term interests of the town for us to have a warrant item. Uh, in front of the voters saying, hmm, do you really want to default on debt? Do you really not want to pay your mortgage? Because you'll never borrow money again.
I fully agree with that. But I think the way some of it has been proposed and that, that type of information is not really clear.
I don't know how much more clear we can be. We were clear at our last meeting when we, uh, approved these articles to be, uh, put on the ballot. Anyone who would like to watch the last meeting, whether they come here in person to ask questions. Whether they appear online, anyone with an internet connection can do that. There's only a hundred and eighty-five people who don't. And, uh, anyone who wants to watch the video after the fact can then come and ask any one of us. Uh, questions about that. I don't understand why, uh, there was this explosion online with, of, of, uh, animosity. When the reality of it is, we're just trying to run the town. So that we don't, so that we don't default on our obligations. We've got to pay, we've got to pay bills.
Everybody done.
Absolutely. Well, you know, the reality of it is, uh, folks want the planning board to be able to expedite. Requests of housing in a reliable and quick way. And to do that, we've got a proposal as part of the administrative budget. To provide some staffing so that applications to the planning board get previewed before they go to the board. So the board can make a reasonable decision with all the information in front of them. Rather than having to say, oh, wait, this application isn't complete. Sorry, you'll have to come back next month. Well, that costs money, doesn't it? What was the, uh, additional amount for that?
The administrative article and the debt service article, we included an explanation. Um. Why the board thought they were important to put back in front of the voters. The, the recreation one doesn't because. Essentially with the voters voting it down, they increase that budget. So all we're trying to do is create an opportunity for an affirmative. That's what they want. I assume that the voters will come and vote the, the same way, that they'll say they wanted that extra money.
Well, the, the recreation, the recreation line is simply a restatement of what already currently exists because we are going back to last year's.
That's correct. We were just trying to provide for an affirmative vote.
Absolutely. So we're giving the voters the opportunity to affirm what already exists. Correct?
Correct.
All right. And what's the, what's the other, uh? The Beaver Brook color, which is, uh, about providing, you know. An essential service. If they have, uh, an emergency at Beaver Brook and there's no road there, what are we going to do? How's the chief going to get the officers to Beaver Brook? They're going to walk through the Willywax, through Wayne, I guess. I don't know.
And one of the major changes, that's just, you haven't mentioned yet, Kent, was all the additional money that was above and beyond what was, uh, shot down. The board has decided to take that out of fund balance. So none of these questions are going to have any impact on the tax rate. Even though they're higher than what was voted down. They chose to take it out of basically the town savings account because the voters said that they were concerned about taxes, so they chose to take it out of there instead.
Right. The savings account that currently is estimated at one point seven million dollars. That was just audited by our financial experts to say, yeah, that sounds about right. You're kind of in line. Actually, you might even be at the top end of what most main municipalities do in terms of having a savings account. Right? A savings account that just got, um, how much was the Comston Hall figure? This, the.
Estimated to be around nineties.
About ninety thousand dollars added to it. That savings account.
Yeah.
Well.
The one you probably see more common, Dave, all the time is school budgets.
Yes.
Times their school budget doesn't pass, so they call for a special election because the state says you've got to educate the children. And, and you've got to have a school budget. And so when it gets voted down, they go back and rework the figures and. Put it, and sometimes do it three and four times before they finally get one to pass.
Last year, RSU four, my RSU four did it four times and they're, I think they're on their third time, heading for their third time now. And.
Typically, when you see other elections after your election, it's because there are things that are imperative that they get passed one way or another.
I put, I, I tried to explain all this on, I write something called Select Board Notes and put it on Facebook. I, I used to do it on the community advertiser, but it doesn't publish anymore, so. The only source I have is, uh, Facebook. So, uh. I write my, uh, notes about what went on at the meetings and try to explain this. This way, uh, best I could, uh.
So, uh, Doug, you might, you might post it on all the other places where people are paying attention. Which would be the, the Facebook group called.
Citizens.
Citizens of Monmouth. And the other Facebook group called The Good, The Bad and The Ugly of Monmouth. Really? Yep. And then I think there's another one, uh.
Monmouth Moms and Dads.
Monmouth Moms and Dads.
But usually there's somebody that reposts all those things to those.
Sometimes Buddy Lloyd does and sometimes not. And sometimes we get a lot of misunderstandings because people are, uh, posting things. From the hip. And then assuming the worst and then. You know, we, and then it's pig pile time.
Shouldn't it really be posted on the town website?
It is.
It is posted on the town website.
Posted on the town website.
As is the video of every one of our meetings.
And after this meeting, I will post it because I try not to push your agendas and the other things down. So like tomorrow morning, I'm going to post. That same thing that's on the town website on to Facebook so that people can take it, share it. But i- if I do too many things at once, it pushes down, you know, like this community night out thing and everything gets. So I try to kind of time it. And so like yesterday, the day before, I wanted to have the, your agenda on there for tonight, so I didn't want to push that down the list. But I try to manage it so that it will get out there the best I can. I can't control where they forward it to.
What was the first group that you mentioned?
Uh, it's, uh, Citizens of Monmouth. Monmouth, The Good, The Bad and The Ugly.
I got that one.
Yeah, be prepared for that one. And then, what's the other one?
Monmouth Moms and Dads.
Oh, Monmouth Moms and Dads. There you go.
There's a fourth group as well.
Oh, what's the fourth one, Connor? Okay.
Uh, Monmouth Local and Community Support.
There you go. Monmouth Local and Community Support. These are the substitutes for the Winthrop advertiser, our community advertiser.
I'd rather have the Winthrop advertiser.
This is where, this is where folks are. Looking for accurate information.
Really? Accurate? Okay. You've done the accurate information. That would be beneficial to everybody.
Other questions? Connor, got any questions?
Just stop.
All right.
I don't want to reach you if I do.
Of course. I will always answer.
You made a point on, on, uh, online about. Why articles say selectmen recommend approval.
Yeah, in the past, yeah, I asked that question.
And I, I, I think there was an explanation made at one point.
Because we don't have an open town meeting and the citizens don't get a chance to ask you anything, I, I, at the actual vote. The, the statute requires that you make a recommendation up or down on the ballot because they don't have an opportunity to sort of debate you like you would in an open town meeting.
Financialized.
So it's a statutory requirement?
Yes.
On any financial.
Right, on anything that has money.
So do you have it?
Yeah. We typically do it on everything. It's kind of an interesting requirement because the Select Board doesn't have to allow any question on there if they don't agree with it. So normally it just wouldn't appear.
Uh, but sometimes, sometimes there, there are groups of citizens.
Right, that can force the issue. Yeah.
They can.
They can petition it. Yeah.
Thank you for answering that question, by the way, because I had assumed since you guys put together the warrant. You had put the questions on there, so obviously you would recommend that we say yes to these questions. I did not know it was statutory required, so I appreciate that.
That's a good point. And, um, I suppose, what, what percent, how many signatures are needed? Is it some percent?
It's usually ten.
Ten percent of the last school.
Open a tour election, yeah. So I think right now we're talking like two hundred and, yeah, something, something like that. It's a pretty good number right now.
There, there had been some people requested in the past, um, if the Select Board recommends yes, they want to know what the vote was, if it was a vote. Okay. Whether it's Select would recommend yes, five zero, or whether, and that may be a little more people, ah, maybe I, I'm not sure I want to vote on this. Because there was a three to two vote by the Select Board on whether you even put it on here. Some, some people have requested it. We haven't taken any action or no one's really brought it to.
Did the town council tell us whether that would be a reasonable?
I think we, I think I might have asked. I, I can't remember, Ken. I can, I can look.
I think you asked.
I think I asked and I can't remember. And she said, I, I can't remember. I'll, I'll have to remind myself. I don't remember.
It's pretty rare that we don't all agree anyway. There's an occasion here and there that we don't, but in the most part. The, the only one I remember in the past was an election to, to, uh, for the.
Thirty thousand dollars.
Playground.
Playground.
If, down at the beach and we vote, it was the last article and we had voted, uh. We had, didn't, didn't have our recommendation, I guess.
We voted no.
We voted no.
Because that was a petition that was brought before us.
Okay.
In the way.
But it passed anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
Is there a petition to recall the Select Board? Is that?
I, I have no knowledge of. I had heard rumors of, but nothing solid, nothing. I had, I had spoken to a citizen, um, online that he had said there were petitions going around, but. Wouldn't say where they were, who they were from, who was in possession of. So at this point, it's, it's hearsay.
Yeah.
I think they saw the same, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so there's somebody saying there is, but no way knowing.
Nothing.
Yeah. Actual evidence of.
Well, there was one that said, we call all of them but one, and I'm wondering who the one is.
He's sitting over there.
I don't know how I lucked out, but. It pays to sit on the end and be quiet.
Whenever we call, you're, you're going to have to run me over, so.
You'll be a dick. I didn't see it happening.
Anyway, uh, any other comment, other comment? Onto a consider contract with KB Oggs to manage the town's TIF district revolving warrant problem.
George. Um, I was just gonna, you can fill in.
Okay.
The, the gaps, but the Economic Development Committee also had a conversation about this. Where, where, uh, part of the, uh, TIF district produces. A revolving phone, uh, uh, fund that we've never done anything with, in part because we've. in part because we've never had an administrator for revolving loans. These are loans that could be small amounts that would be given out to businesses for the purpose of economic development. None have been given. We simply were at a standstill with this part of the TIF funding. And part of it was because KV Cog didn't have anybody to help administer the fund. Maybe you can fill folks in on exactly what it does.
Yeah, so we think that there, that this contract existed before, but we can't seem to find it. Cog remembered that, that they had signed one. They can't find an executed copy on their end either. So, right, you did have one, just nobody seems to know where it is. It's been turnover here and there, a lot, so. I think you pretty much got it. It was just so that there's somebody that can do all the financial reporting. They would do the collection process, make sure they stayed on their payment schedules, requested it, sent them the forms they need to fill out their taxes at the end of the year. Just sort of professional services that we just don't have the ability to manage.
How was, how was KV Cog compensated for that?
There are various fees for depending on what they have to do, which we won't incur any of until we actually have a loan. So the fees to do all of the, the reporting, the loan activity reports, prepare the letters, commitment letters, all that stuff. It's a ninety-five dollars an hour fee. There's a thirty-four dollar a month fee to run the computer system, which they divide out amongst all of their clients and loan holders for other communities. So every time one adds on, that fee may go up or down depending on, there's a certain fee that they divvy up amongst however many people they're managing. And then there's underwriting services, which is a hundred and ten dollars an hour. That's a direct path loans, and that's just to have underwriters look at the loans before they're serviced. If they're requested by the community. So if you have one that you, you want that extra expertise looking at it before you close. Some of these are very simple, but some of them could be more complicated, and you may want to have an underwriter look at it before you I think that's pretty much it. Everything else, any other additional activities that you may want them to do, they charge ninety-five dollars an hour. So their, their fee is ninety-five dollars an hour basically for their work. And then the hundred and ten is if they have to hire somebody else to help them.
What's your recommendation on this?
This is pretty, this is pretty straightforward stuff. This is kind of a boilerplate from them. I think that it's probably a good idea for us to have somebody because we never know when someone's going to step forward and request this, and if we're not really prepared to help them.
Yes, we're coming now.
Right.
Right. So we may get an opportunity. We haven't, since the inception of the TIF, we've never had an applicant. But we won't if we don't have this.
Yeah, right.
And the process for approving this loan. I mean, I, I don't even know that we have a process other than the Economic Development Committee would probably take a look at it.
Right.
Come up with a recommendation and say something to the Select Board about it. So the Select Board would make the decision.
I think we need to be open for business.
I make a motion, we approve the contract with Imac Valley Council of Governments to manage the town's TIF district revolving loan fund.
Second. So it's a motion by Chris, second by Ken, to approve the contract for services with KB Cog of all those in favor. Thank you. Yes, only on number eight, so on to number nine. Warrant number forty. Blue Rock Earthworks Materials Transport, two thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. CMP, five thousand eight hundred and two dollars sixty-nine cents. Dennis K. Burke for fuel, one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Family Violence Project, one thousand one hundred and twenty-five, that's just one of our annual donations. Forty Years Tree Service, one thousand eight hundred and twenty, that was for the pulp trucks, like, it'll get, it'll get cooped by the FEMA money. Main Technology Group, this is a list of bills that go back a little ways that we're missing somehow. Eight thousand seventy-eight dollars and eleven cents. Some of those are project bills that came out of the ARPA funds, and some of it is just a couple of, like rebuilding the chief's server and the one at the town office. Some of this stuff has been done, but they didn't bill us for it, so it's behind. Main, main waste of energy tipping fee, six thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and ninety cents. RSU two, five hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and eight. And State of Maine Bureau of Motor Vehicles, thirteen thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars for a grand total of five hundred ninety-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-six cents.
I make a motion, we approve fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four warrant number twenty-eight.
Second. So it's a motion by Ken, second by Joe, to approve warrant number twenty-eight, or fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. All of the favor? Thank you. And next is an executive session.
Before we, before we move there, Mr. Chair, I, just so it's on the record. Justin, when we were talking about the internet question, I wonder if we could find out, and I don't, I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but if we could find out when it is that Spectrum's agreement with the town is up for renewal.
Oh, you mean their franchise agreement?
Yes.
I think it's been, I think it's been expired for a decade.
Yeah, it's been expired for a long time.
So
In fact, it wasn't even with Spectrum, or some, like Charter or some other company that
Yeah, whatever it was, three, three names ago, I think, yeah.
So how is it they were operating in the town then?
Because a lot of towns ignore those because they haven't been fruitful. They drag out for five years, and the companies don't really respond, and nobody really does anything about it.
We've tried to get connected to some people who've approached us about connection like that, maybe Maple Ridge Island. And we don't get.
So wait, they're operating in town
Yep.
without a valid franchise?
Yeah, and they're doing it probably in a lot of other, many, many other places.
That sounds like a bill.
Well, I mean, there already is statute that's supposed to say that, but there's just nobody to, there's nobody willing to enforce them because
There's no, there's, there's not a big enough penalty.
Yeah, probably, because I mean, the issue would be, is someone going to turn them off? And then three quarters of the town loses its internet and cable services. Or there could be a fine mechanism too. I mean, I don't know. I mean, the municipalities gave up a long time ago trying to fight, trying to fight this battle, at least at the MMA level because their lobbyists are, seem to be very entrenched over under the dome, and they just don't get anywhere. So it's been kind of taken off the importance list for MMA for quite a while. I know when I worked in Bath back in two thousand thirteen, we didn't have one either. And they didn't have one for a long time either. Back then, it was like a decade too.
I mean, we're talking about trying to get internet service to unserved or super underserved residences in town. And it seems to me like the easiest way to do that is to incentivize one way or another, either with a carrot or a stick, the existing resource, right? So if Spectrum's already here, why wouldn't we say to them, let the municipality have some addition? I mean, every time that franchise agreement got renewed, there was a bargaining that happened, right? County Monmouth would say, well, we'll renew you if you add, you know, three more miles of cable down this road because it doesn't, has, has the most number of residents and it doesn't have service. That doesn't happen anymore. And it's because, and, and so now we've got, you know, nine percent of, eight percent of the community that doesn't have any internet.
Yeah, I don't know the finer points of it. I'm just trying to explain that in all the communities I've worked in, none of them have bothered.
Well, maybe the chair
I'm not saying that's true everywhere. I'm just saying in the, in the places I worked, they didn't bother with it.
Maybe the, maybe the chair of the legislative review body for MMA might.
I'm actually less helpful now because I'm the chair. I don't get the vote.
Okay.
Good night, y'all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you have anything, Sharon, that you wanted to discuss?
No, but we don't have a franchise agreement either.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're just running roughshod.
Not since it was Frontier Vision.
Yeah, they're just running roughshod.
Well, and we, if you wanted to push it, I mean, likely we would have to go get our town attorney to do it for us.
No, we, we go put a bill in the legislature that
Well, yeah, I guess you could do that.
Here's the, here's this giant stick that if you don't renew your franchise agreement, you will suffer from.
Yeah. Still in the session, so
Yep.
Tell someone.
I make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA four oh five six A personnel.
Second.
All of us in favor?